Okay, sure. Um, so I guess calls order planning meeting for June 18th, 2020. Um, and then yeah, if you want to do the roll call.
Great, uh Chair Aghi.
Here.
Vice Chair Bodnar. Uh Commissioner Resick.
Hi Chair.
Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Lee, I think he's logged on and will probably join us in a few minutes because we said we were going to delay for a few minutes. Uh Commissioner Merrick.
How come I can't find Chair?
Alright, I don't see Commissioner Merrick, I saw him earlier, and Commissioner Meadows.
Here.
Okay. It looks like we have a quorum of the commission, but a couple of commissioners that were present just a minute ago are probably going to come out. And I recommend to wait until then to allow them to be fully participate in the meeting.
Okay.
We can meet again at 7:10 when they, they join us again.
Okay.
Alright.
I see, uh, Roni is there now.
Roni was muted, but she's here.
I was always here, just muted.
Oh, okay.
Trying to get settled, figure out where to sit.
Interesting parts of the meeting.
And I'll be hanging out in silent mode as usual.
Okay. If you need it.
Or maybe since we haven't officially started yet, I can mention that, um, Jim Sandoval and the crew worked their tails off today and downtown is different than it's ever been.
Yeah.
And if you haven't seen it, I encourage you to go have a look.
My daughter went and said it looked wonderful.
Good.
A hu- a huge level of energy, it lifts your spirits to see it's that way, you know, after so long.
Welcome to start the meeting whenever you're ready.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna start at, uh, 7:10.
Okay.
Yeah, I wonder how much it resembles with the downtown visioning imagined for our downtown. We could do it, model it after some of their suggestions and see how well they work.
My recollection is that most of what was recommended there had things moving into the plazas rather than the main drag.
Hmm.
So it, it's significantly different from what's in the visioning document.
Yes.
In location, but like concepts of having a block area closed, restaurants is where, where, where living at.
It would be nice if there were more umbrellas because it was so hot in the sun that it was hard to encourage people to go into the middle of the street if there weren't umbrellas up there.
Yeah, and I think there's more, I talked, I ran into Jim in the parking lot at Drager's and, um, he said there were more businesses wanting to do more umbrellas and rearranging, but they're gonna be rearranging things again in a couple of days when they get the, um, ADA ramps built.
Excellent. I hope some hand dresses set up, stand there as well.
I don't think they can legally do that.
Oh, hi, Bianca hasn't opened yet.
I see Commissioner Lee is on board.
Oops. You have Commissioner Park one.
Yeah, he's on.
Okay, it's 7:10, so I'll, I'll complete the, um, the roll call and ask, uh, Commissioner Lee, present? Commissioner Lee, roll call.
Yep, here he is.
He's muted.
He's muted, alright. Uh, Commissioner Merrick. I think Commissioner Merrick will join us in a little bit, but you have a quorum to start the meeting.
Okay, um, great, thank you John. Um, so first up, on the agenda, uh, public comments on items not on the agenda. Um, does anyone on the line have any comments for items not on the agenda? Um, I don't see anyone that... Okay, if not, uh, I will close that, um, and then we will move on to, uh, planning commission minutes from May 21st, 2020 and June 4th, 2020. Um, does anyone have comments on those minutes? No? Everyone's good?
I mean that we accept the minutes of the two meetings that you mentioned?
All second.
Okay, uh, if you want to do a, a roll call?
Uh, yes, uh, for adoption of both the minutes from May the 1st of 2020 and June the 4th of 2020, uh, Chair Aghi.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bodnar.
Yes.
Commissioner Resick.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Merrick.
He's muted.
And Commissioner Meadows.
Yes.
Motion passes 6 to 0.
Alright, great, um, so next up, public hearing, zoning text amendment ZTA 20 dash 0001, accessory dwelling units. Um, I'll hand it off to Guido for his presentation.
Alright, sounds good, can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Let me try to pull up my PowerPoint. Alright, fifth time's a charm with the planning commission, hopefully we can get this done today, so, um, we've had some, uh, delays, you guys are aware. Um, 45 minutes before a meeting in May, we got some comments that we had to address. And then a week, week and a half after that, we got some additional comments from the state. So that's why we're here today, so I'm just gonna walk through kind of where we kind of left it off and, uh, the focus of tonight will be on some of the edits. Can you guys hear me or do I need to speak louder?
Fine.
Good.
Okay, good, alright, next. So, uh, per the commission's direction, we did add some categories of ADUs. We also added, uh, square footage charts. We also added square footage charts into the, uh, the, uh, ordinance. Uh, per the direction from the, uh, planning commission, we do have the daylight plane, we've talked about the daylight plane very extensively. Uh, I have two graphics to show, uh, the daylight plane. Uh, we've received positive feedback from architects and contractors that this, uh, new daylight plane is, uh, reasonable and doable in terms of enforcement and creating, um, better design for Los Altos residents. This is just another graphic showing the daylight plane. Uh, the other kind of major change is, as the commission's aware, you know, there are six housing bills, some of them don't exactly, uh, correspond with each other. Some parts reference 800 square feet, some parts reference 850. Um, after the May 7th meeting, uh, I spoke with the city attorney and John, the community development director, and I think at this point, we're just gonna land on 850 square feet, uh, for what someone, someone can do above the max FAR for their lot. Um, and so, yeah. One thing that's been discussed extensively by the commission, uh, but I do need final direction, is we are trying to make a recommendation to the city council of potential reduction of permit fees. Um, this is a positive step to show state HCD, uh, that Los Altos is serious about building, um, ADUs and incentivizing these units. Um, incentivizing the units is strongly encouraged in the next round for the housing element. Uh, the next part of my staff report discussed this whole hybrid model that Walter Chapman, uh, brought up. Um, at this point, I'm really not gonna take a position on that, um, there's really no change to the ordinance that's required. Um, as detailed in the staff report, it could be a way for people to get around the FAR requirements for the city, but, you know, the positive is you could actually get a better integrated design for the ADUs. So it, but it really doesn't require any change to the actual ordinance. Uh, next up, as, because we've had a little bit more time to research this, um, council member Flagar actually reached out to me about a month, month and a half ago and kind of wanted to know how do the ADUs fit within the overall housing element? Um, and so part of my research, I reached out to Hillsborough and Half Moon Bay and ended up finding out that those cities, as part of their ADU process, every year send out a survey and they get the survey data back to document what kind of rental incomes, uh, people are receiving for the units. And based on area median income, uh, Hillsborough and Half Moon Bay are actually able to get credit for their Reno goals. Um, so this is something I think is very positive for, uh, Los Altos, this is something that can be easily replicated and this is another recommendation from staff. Uh, the other part of this is, um, we will be trying to find a way to do an annual ADU recertification um, to inspect the units as part of the, uh, meeting our Reno goals, so that is in the resolution. Now I'm gonna go through the very tedious edits I got from the state and other stakeholders. Um, so it was very clear in the ordinance, but the state wanted to make it abundantly clear that the four foot setback applies. So I changed a few, couple small edits within the ordinance to make that clear. Um, there was a request, uh, from staff to put in language about just having property owners be aware that if they convert their garage, it converts, um, it creates some non-conformity for the house, not for the ADU. Uh, state HCD felt that that kind of went above kind of what, what our limits were in terms of the ADU ordinance and they asked us to take that out, so that was taken out. Uh, there were several small little edits just to make it abundantly clear that multifamily housing units are entitled to ADUs and that amenities within the multifamily can be modified for an ADU. Um, one of the major changes, uh, from the state was the 50% rule that we've all been discussing. Uh, I was informed by the state that that can only be applied to attached ADUs. Um, that actually is a change from when they originally reviewed the ordinance before we started this process, but that was the requested edit, so we did make that. Um, because the city is losing a little, uh, quite a bit of local land use control, I am recommending to drop the maximum square footage from 1,200 down to 1,000 to ensure the units are compatible and subordinate to the main house. So my recommendation tonight to the planning commission has four parts. Uh, number one, to recommend approval of the actual zoning text amendment and find that it is exempt from CEQA. Uh, number two, to recommend to the city council that the master fee schedule for all ADUs be reduced for a period of 12 months after final adoption by the city council. Um, request that there be an ADU annual recertification fee so that staff can inspect the units and to recommend and direct staff to, to send out a survey every year, uh, by September 1st of every year so that we can collect data on the ADUs and then hopefully get credit through the next housing element for our, uh, ADUs that have been built. So that concludes my initial presentation.
Okay, great, um, thank you so much Guido. Um, does anyone have any questions for staff? No more? Oh, Phoebe.
Everyone.
Everyone can see it, yeah, anyone have any questions? Phoebe, you wanna go first?
The, the thing I wanted to point out is, I understand that staff is recommending reduction from 1,200 to 1,000, but there's some, uh, words missing that needs to go through because it's not, uh, the words don't match the numerical, um, numbers in a couple of places, so you need to do a little word search on that one, Guido?
I'm on it.
Huh?
You are muted.
Oh.
I think Roni was talking off camera and so she didn't see that.
You are muted.
I was gonna suggest that, and other than that, um, the HCD rule that said make it clear that it's either attached or detached is four feet. I think you need to take, well, maybe this was in the discussion, um, because you said the setback shall be four feet. But in fact, I think we need to say that it's a minimum because you don't require four feet, that's the smallest you can have it. But we'll go through this, that, those are the only two edits.
Okay, great, thank you Phoebe. Um, Sally, did you wanna have a comment?
Sure, uh, question, sticking with questions, so, um, the drop to 1,000 square foot at the max from 1,200, I understand that's, uh, consistent with state law, so that, um, probably makes sense. Though it's a significant drop from what we've had in place for the last year, year and a half, whenever we put the 1,200. So how many, uh, non-conforming ADUs are we going to create by, uh, dropping down to, um, 1,000 from 1,200, if any?
Well, I mean, they wouldn't be non-conforming because they were built in conformance with the laws at the time, so.
Well, they're limited, but they're legal non-conforming, yeah, legal non-conforming, yes.
Yeah, I, I, I'd have to dig for that, I mean, uh, yeah, I don't have that answer right now.
We usually try to avoid that, but, um, and, and I'm not quite sure, maybe you can explain why all of a sudden between the last time we talked about this and this time, uh, you say we're losing local control. We've been losing, I mean, we've lost local control on this whole ADU discussion, so what changed, um, that made you decide to take that down?
You know, it's, it's merely a staff suggestion, if the commission wants to bump it back up to 1,200, that's perfectly within the commission's right. It just seemed, uh, because we were losing the ability to regulate the attached units, that it seemed reasonable to drop the square footage, but once again, it is just a staff recommendation, if the commission wants to go up to 1,200, that's certainly within the right of the commission.
Okay, then, um, another question, so you have, uh, an example and, and we've been carrying that forward for a number of times about the so-called hybrid model, which in discussion, I'm going to suggest we get rid of that terminology, um, but I'll explain that during discussion. Um, but you use the number 500 and then you show a table, um, this is on page 6 of the PDF, on page 6 of the staff report. You talk about, um, and there's, by the way, a typo because you end up with 4650 total square feet in both scenarios. Um, but you're using 500 square feet and at first I thought you were using that because you were referring to JADUs, but that's not really the case because it can be any number of square feet that could deliver you to this scenario, isn't that correct? I mean, within obviously the, the 850, uh, square feet. Did you follow me? The question is, you're using 500 square feet, it's really, it's really an example where you're going to end up in the same place if you're replacing square footage. 500 is, is not, I assume, the only number of which you're, um, applying this scenario to.
That's correct, that was merely just an example.
Okay, I'll reserve the rest of my comments for, uh, question then around, around all of that. Then, um, on, let's see, somehow this, I think it changed because I don't remember, um, that it was like this, but now all of a sudden, in pretty much the entire language now, a JDU, JADU is written as, um, as, you know, going into an existing structure. And we, the conversations we had in the past were that, um, a JADU could go into a, a new residence or an existing residence and if it were an existing residence, in that scenario, they could potentially be entitled to an extra 150 square feet. But the way you've written this rendition, it looks like you're actually not allowing JADUs in new structures and that doesn't make any sense to me at all, so can you explain that?
That wasn't the intent, and I don't believe that's how it's written, if you want to cite a specific section?
Yes, I can give you several sections, three or four actually, so, uh, but why don't we save that for discussion as well? Um, then, um, so then this is kind of big, but I didn't see it reflected throughout. On page 15 of the PDF, which is I think page, uh, 7 of the ordinance, there is one little sentence thrown in on, um, number 4. And, uh, number 4 talks about a new detached accessory dwelling unit, um, and in addition to the primary dwelling are limited to 1,000 square feet. Next comes the kicker, there is no size limitation on an accessory dwelling unit that is created by converting space within the existing primary dwelling or accessory structure. So I saw in the correspondence where that came from, but other than this one sentence in the draft ordinance, it's not reflected in the tables or anywhere else, so, um, how are you going to incorporate that into the rest of the ordinance? Because that's actually a huge leap.
Yeah, so that came after long discussions with the state, they actually specifically asked that I add that language to the ordinance. Um, Jolie's deputy Eric and I and Jolie fundamentally disagree with some of the language, but that's what the state said we had to do in order to get this past the goal line. Um, and so that, that verbiage was added and, um, there, I won't bore you with all the gory details, but there are several parts that also, I don't particularly read into the state laws, but that was the direction given from the state.
No, I, I understand that part of it, but the only place that I see it reflected in the tables or anywhere else is just this one sentence on page 15 of the PDF in, uh, you know, item number 4, the second sentence. It's not reflected in the tables at all, and so if you're, um, well, again, this is probably a discussion item, but, uh, that, that is actually a, a huge change and I only see it reflected in the ordinance in that one sentence.
Duly noted.
Okay, so, um, I think that's all my questions.
Okay, thank you Sally. Um, do any of the other commissioners have any comments for staff?
Yeah.
Yeah, Duho?
Yeah, sure, uh, uh, along similar lines, um, I think it's, uh, I'll refer to the, um, square footage chart, this one. Uh, but I think it, it's pertaining to the junior accessory dwelling unit, um. I, it says, uh, 500 square feet created by the conversion of existing square footage dwelling, however, up to 150 square foot can be added to the existing structure for purposes of ingress and egress. Now, and, and then the next sentence says the additional square footage shall be counted towards the 500. Is, is that, is that correct or is that in addition to the 500 that's allowed?
That's correct. That verbiage is correct, yes.
Okay, so you, you'll, well, you'll end up with what, uh, 350 square foot of usable space?
Plus the 150 added on for ingress egress.
Right, but the ingress egress space is not really, it's not occupiable space, so to speak, right? Or is it, or is it meant to be?
It, I mean, it's meant to be habitable space.
It's, it's meant to be habitable space, okay, alright, okay. And, uh, also the objective design standards, that's at the bottom of that, is that, will that be, um, filled in at some point or is that just a placeholder for now?
That's at the bottom of the ordinance. It's in section...
But it, it seems like it's part of the, um, it's part of the chart.
Uh, subsection, uh, page, uh, it's below the daylight plane, uh, so what chat? I should have written more sections into the ordinance. 14050, J, past the daylight plane, J 1, 2, 3, 4, those are some of the objective standards we'll be looking at.
Um, Commissioner Lee, I, I see what you're referencing and I think that is just a function of how the table carries a portion of both the column and the row over to the next page. So if you look on page 4 of the ordinance at the bottom there,
Yeah.
this accessory dwelling unit is subject to objective design standards, that's all part of the same sentence and then the criteria is in the, the section to the right there, uh, an ADU between those numbers is subject to that chapter.
Okay, alright.
It, it's not missing anything, it just appears to be missing something because of the...
Got it, got it, sure, sure, alright, understood, uh, I'll move on. Uh, just a final question then, is regarding this, uh, minimum sill height of five feet for windows on second story, is there, is there any sort of concerns regarding egress issues, uh, for those windows? That, that would prevent you from, uh, a five-foot sill height? None have been expressed so far.
But the building code requires the sill to be 44 inches or less.
Right.
Uh, we've asked for sill heights of 54 inches at the DRC for the whole time I've been here, so I don't, so.
If there's another egress window available, that's really what the turning point is. If you have a room that only has one exposure and it's on the second floor and it's a bedroom, then it has to have a height of 44 inches or less, correct?
Okay, I'm certain if you want to change that language, I spoke with the chief building official for San Jose and some San Jose officials, they actually wrote that into that ordinance, so, but if you, if you want to change it, that's certainly fine.
Well, don't we also, isn't, doesn't our ordinance also say single plant, we're only one story for ADUs? So is this not moot? I think it's not moot.
Some people have been trying to propose some lofts, so I'm trying to just put in some protections to protect the neighborhoods in terms of privacy, so that's why I added that to the ordinance.
Well, also an attached ADU could presumably be a second story.
Alright. Okay, that's all the questions I had, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you Duho, does anyone else have any questions? If not, um, okay.
When can residents ask questions? I'm not sure I'm allowed to ask questions yet.
Oh, uh, right, right after this, I'm gonna open it up for public comment, yeah. Um, so I guess next up, I will open it up for public comment, um, if you want to go for it. I think you have, uh, three minutes.
Alright, so my question really is around the size of a detached ADU and looking at the spirit of the ordinance that has been passed by the state, which is to provide affordable housing so more people can come into Los Altos and live in these ADUs. So if you look at a family of four, it would be a pretty tight squeeze to live in 850 square feet. So my ask, for example, on my own lot, which is almost 20,000 square feet, I have more than ample room to, um, create a two-bedroom ADU and I think when I look at what San Jose is doing, for instance... And I think, when I look at what San Jose is doing, for instance, where they say the lot size is 9,000 or greater, the size can be up to 800 square feet or 50% of the primary residence without exceeding 1,200 square feet. For example, if the lot size is 9,000 or greater, and there's a 2,400 square foot home, a 1,200 square foot attached or detached ADU is allowed. So I've looked at Redwood City, I've looked at San Jose, and I feel that if we are complying, yes, this is in compliance, but if we are really going after the spirit of what I believe we're trying to do here, which is affordable housing, I know lots and lots of people who cannot afford to live in Los Altos, then I think then we need to look at what can, what is needed for a family of four and two bedrooms. I think 1,000 square feet minimum, especially for people who have a lot size the size of my lot, should be allowed. And so I feel that we're being more stringent than other cities are. So that's the comment I wanted to make.
Okay, thank you so much. Does anyone else have a public comment? Is anyone else on the phone call?
Let me, Chair, let me unmute everyone. So everyone has now been unmuted, so.
Sure, no problem.
If anyone wants to speak, who's from a member of the public, you've been unmuted? Okay, well, Chair, I don't think anyone else has chimed in, so.
Okay. So I'll close public comment, and I will open up for discussion. Would anyone like to go first? If not, I'll have to call on someone. Sally, would you like to go first?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
So I think I've given some hints about some of the discussion points. So let's start with the JADU. So both, if you go to the tables at the beginning of the ordinance, you'll see that the language in the first table, page 11 of the PDF, page 3 of the ordinance, "Junior ADU, 500 square feet created from the existing square footage of the residential structure." And then you go on to the next table on the next page, JADU, says essentially the same thing, "Shall be 500 square feet created by the conversion of existing square footage of the dwelling unit." And this is, that's the same one that Duvo had referred to when he was asking the question about the 150 square feet. So I did find one place, I think it was on page 18, number 10 of the ordinance, where it does actually talk about, you know, an ADU potentially being from new, a new... So that's page 10 of the ordinance. Number 2, it does say, "A junior accessory dwelling unit is submitted with a permit application to create a new single-family dwelling on the lot." But that's the only, it seemed like all the references I ran into talked about existing square footage and creating of that. And I think we should be very clear, especially in the tables, that a JADU does not have to be only created out of an existing structure. It could be proposed with a new structure. And Guido, you probably agreed with that because you said that it wasn't the intent not to say that. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, that was, yeah, the intent was to allow the JADU within the confines of the house, so.
Well, then that's not answering the question. Within the confines of any house, existing or new?
It's supposed to be, I think, okay, so I think during our first meeting, we spoke about this. If you get super technical, you can build a JADU within the confines of the house. That's technically what the law says. You could technically add on to your house, finalize it, and then come back, and then go back and convert part of that space that's within the confines of the house to a junior ADU. And I believe I had shown a chart in May, and I could bring it up again, that different cities were interpreting that differently. And let me pull that up right now for the commission.
Well, part of that was, interpretation was around the extra 150 square feet, not necessarily whether you could or couldn't. Anyway, what I'm going to propose is, it makes absolutely no sense in my mind that you would only allow someone to create a JADU in an existing house, and that we would require them to build a new house and then apply to convert space. It should be able to propose a new house with a JADU in the new house or the new space.
Okay.
So what I would suggest should be clear.
Guido? I think it's included in, I think that it's included with existing. So existing, the definition that we changed for existing includes new. So it is covered there.
It might be that we need the definition to say principal structure as opposed to ADU, because if we call it existing house, it's a little fishy. But if you say you could do it within the principal residence, then it doesn't make any difference if it's new or existing. Jolie, would that work?
I don't, I think we're going to use the language that we have and not go to principal, because HCD changed the language back. I mean, we've been round and round and round with them.
So this is one of the cases where things were badly written and it's being stuffed down or through them?
Yeah, I'm looking at the definition of existing, and it doesn't seem to say new in that. It says, "Existing when referring to an existing principal dwelling, accessory structure, or other building or structure, refers to a building or structure erected prior to the date of adoption of the appropriate building code, or one for which a legal building permit has been issued. An unpermitted building or structure shall not be considered existing." So that doesn't say anything in there about new. So to me, that's a flaw and makes no sense. And I would be surprised if, you know, HD, HCD didn't agree with that. But anyway, that's my feedback on that issue. So then, going, I referred to the hybrid, so this is in the staff report, so page 6. And I do agree that we called it and been calling it the hybrid approach. I think that's actually very confusing and does not help, it will not help council understand this. The reason it's a hybrid, and again, let's not get bogged down on, oh, his name's not coming to me, but the architect and Walter Chapman, yes. I don't want to get bogged down on his specifics, so this is what brought it up. It's a hybrid in the sense that we're talking about new and existing space and how to use it. So, and whether you can put, you know, do this little juggling act of space. So I think it would be more appropriate, instead of calling it a hybrid model and a hybrid scenario, to talk about the scenario where space is being added on to an existing house. And then you can use the table you have, the math should be right, to show that they're both 4,000, 650 total square feet. I would recommend using an example other than 500 square feet, because since you start talking about 500 square feet, it sounds like you're talking about a JADU. And again, that's kind of where Walter was, and I think that's, again, very confusing because to me, the scenario where you're going to add on to your house, and you want to create a JADU or an ADU, this sort of giving and taking of space should be allowed. So I think we should rename it, it's not a hybrid scenario. It's when creating ADUs from existing and new construction, or something like that. So, because I think the way it is, you know, it's going to be very confusing for council, much less for our Los Altos residents. Then, did you want to, you want to say something, Guido?
No, I'm taking notes.
Okay, okay. So then, again, on to the page, the sentence that I read that you inserted and don't necessarily agree with, but it's there in that one place on page 7 of the ordinance. "No size limitation on ADUs created by converting space within existing primary dwelling." So if that's the case, then, the tables at the very beginning of, or at the ordinance on pages 3 and 4 of the ordinance do not say that at all. So the attached ADU, and this would be one scenario of an attached ADU, it says 1,000 square feet, but no more than 50% of the floor area of an existing or proposed dwelling unit, let's not touch the basement area, that's not relevant. But what they are actually telling you is you cannot, in an existing structure, limit the size of an ADU, which is a little weird. I agree with you. But that's not what the table says, and the same thing on page 4. You're not at all addressing that sentence that's added to page 7 of the ordinance. So right now, it's just kind of buried in there, and it doesn't, it's not at all expressed in a way that anyone can access that information and understand what they can do with an ADU. So, let's see. So on page 13 of the draft ordinance, then it talks about, oh, sorry, that's, so page 21 of the PDF. Sorry, I can't wait till we get paper back for this, frankly. So page 21, we talk about voluntary setbacks. And we say, applicants are encouraged to voluntarily increase the setbacks to be 10 feet. And so our purpose in doing that, I mean, yes, we're saying, okay, if you're nice, you'll do this, but that doesn't really give them much incentive. So I thought, you know, that's one of the reasons why we introduced and spent so much time on the daylight plane language, is to say, to add, if you do this, then at 10 feet, you would be already eligible for the 16-foot height. And so that is missing. I see Phoebe's nodding because, you know, she's been encouraging that daylight plane as an incentive. So really, that sentence, I think, needs to be added there. And similarly, then, the annual ADU recertification process. So that, I completely agree, we should be doing something along those lines and trying to get Lina credit for these. But I found this to be a curious mix. So you talked about Hillsborough and Half Moon Bay. So we're writing it as voluntary reporting of rent. Were Hillsborough and Half Moon Bay also voluntary reporting, Guido?
Yes.
Okay, so, and so therefore, I mean, must it, the state says it has to be voluntary. You can't require people to report, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, Jolie's nodding. Okay, so it has to be voluntary. But, but the rest of the program, the other half of the program isn't voluntary. So staff are directed to send out the rental income survey. Oh, but the other half is that, you know, going into the house and make sure they're compliant with, you know, the aspects of the ADU that we, and we're going to make them pay for that in that annual inspection. So I think the rental piece is very important information, but I thought it sounded a little heavy-handed to me, because technically, any house that gets building permits, you know, aren't we, couldn't any of us do anything to, you know, well, why are we focused on making inspections mandatory for the ADU? That's the question for Guido or John or Jolie.
I mean, if we're truly trying to keep these affordable for teachers, policemen, whatnot, and if we're really trying to get credit for these, I mean, it just seems like a natural extension to, you know, do a very quick, check the site plan of the original final approval, and just go out there and inspect it, and make sure that it is what it says it is. Because the other part of the ordinance that you cited about people being able to basically convert the entire interior of their house, and some other issues I brought up in the staff report, if we're really trying to keep these as affordable units, yeah, it would make sense to try to inspect them. I do agree, I could certainly change the language to make it a voluntary inspection. That's certainly fine, but it just seemed...
Well, I'm just bringing up, yeah, no, it's just a point of discussion. We'll see if any of the other commissioners, I just thought it seemed incredibly more heavy-handed than we are with anything else. And really, the important part is the rent that's being charged, but that's voluntary. And so what, you're going to make, you're going to say, I have to come in your house every year, and you're going to pay me to do that, but meanwhile, if, you know, please let me know if you're, what you're charging for rent, or if anything, right? So it just seemed a little weird, but if HCD is okay with this, then maybe that's fine. But I also thought that your point in the staff report about someone could then rip out kitchen and bath space, I mean, that would be kind of crazy. Kitchen and bath space is the expensive space, right? So why is someone going to rip out all that useful, expensive stuff to have more open space in a house? I don't, you know, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But anyway, so I've said my little bit on that one. And then, let's see, I think that was the, that was my main point of discussion.
Sally, do you, would you give an opinion on whether it should be 1,000 or 1,200 square feet for the larger unit?
You know, that's a good question. I can see it both ways. In fact, I think when planning commission sent it last time, last time we did the ADU, we sent it at 1,000, and council, to our surprise, made it 1,200. But to take it back down seems a little, it's almost like downzoning. Because we already say, for the detached units, basement space counts, there's not actually that much difference in square footage between 850, where you're supposed to have a studio or a one-bedroom, and then you're going to have two or more bedrooms. And if it's only 150 square, 150 more square feet between 850 and 1,000, those are pretty small bedrooms. So I can see keeping it at 1,200, and I would actually probably argue that we should keep it at 1,200 because that's where council put it last time, and let them decide if they want to try to take it down.
Okay. Thank you, Sally. Phoebe, did you want to go next?
Sure. I think we've really worked very hard on this. And Guido, I think, despite the fact that HCD has been fairly obnoxious, I think you've managed to hammer out a pretty good ordinance altogether. The thing I wanted to focus on is, I have some little nitpicks, but when you talk in the staff report about the purpose, the purpose is to ensure compliance with state law. I think the piece that I really want to focus on is it's not only to comply with state law, but also do it in a manner that reflects the best way we can reflecting Los Altos community values. And so when I am fairly forceful in suggesting that at 10 feet the daylight plane should jump up, it's because I'm looking for ways to encourage good behavior. And so when Sally was talking about what we're going to call the existing and new square footage model, where you get replacement credit for existing space that you take out of your existing house to apply to an ADU, in addition to some form of new space, with a limit on that so that you don't go over the global view of how the unit should be, I think that's a very important way of encouraging people to be good neighbors. Because even though there is a four-foot minimum setback that's permitted, if you are attached to a house that may be 10 feet away, you still are going to be further away from some property line by being attached to an existing structure. And so I think it would be good if there was a sentence that somehow it's not an own category called hybrid, but it's something to the effect that if you use existing square footage in the principal residence up to a number, 850 square feet delta, that... footage in the principal residence, up to a number, eight fifty square feet delta, that you get credit to put somewhere else on your principal structure, replacement for that. And I think that's another way of encouraging, what Walter brought up a good point, which is, if every property in Los Altos put a detached accessory structure in the back at four feet setbacks at the rear and side, it would be counter to why people live in a suburban town like Los Altos, where we really value privacy between structures. And so I feel that that would be an important thing to put in, in some way, when we're talking about attached accessory dwelling units, that if you use some existing space, you can credit back up to the limit. In terms of the twelve hundred versus one thousand, I can support the twelve hundred, because although I have been known to put two bedrooms and one bath in eight hundred and fifty square feet, Sally is right, the bedrooms are very small. They're above FHA minimum, which is seventy square feet, but it's really tough to get a bed and a piece of furniture and a closet in. So I would support keeping it at twelve hundred and being consistent through the ordinance when we have the numbers back and forth, that's just wordsmithing. When we have the inspection of units that's non-voluntary, I was gonna ask Guido, I know his concern was that if it would be possible for someone to game the system, to get extra square footage above what they're entitled to by our code FAR and coverage and whatnot, by purporting to put in an ADU and then ripping out the stuff that didn't work for them, and having a bigger house, I think by having inspections, you basically have short-circuited that, even though I agree with Sally in principle, that someone who rips out a bathroom, bathrooms are always useful, and rips out a kitchen, which might be a wet bar in someone else's place, probably what they'd be more likely to do would rip out a separating wall, and if there was an ADU inspection, then this would not be an issue. So I urge my fellow commissioners to support the concept of giving replacement credit square footage for an ADU that uses both existing and new square footage. I wanted to point out that in the actual language on, let's see, this is the section here, it's in, it's in our very long section about detached or extension, it's on page ink, it says a setback of four feet from interior and rear lot lines shall be required. I think we want to say is a minimum setback of four feet is allowed, is permitted, as opposed to required, because otherwise, we're requiring people to be four feet from the property line, and my philosophical goal is to keep them away from the property line. So I'd like that language a little clearer. And then, on the voluntary additional setback, fourteen fourteen zero eighty, if we're gonna do this, I think it should be ten feet and ten feet, because ten feet is our standard side yard, and ten feet is a reduced rear yard for the ADU. And as Sally points out, if you're ten feet away, and the daylight plane, as it is proposed, is accepted by council, then we're really encouraging people to pull away from the property line, which I think is one way that enhances, enhances the goal of quality of life for people in Los Altos who came here with an expectation of suburban separation. So that section with the four-foot minimum setback is in fourteen fourteen zero fifty, and it's F two, as in, F as in Frank two, in terms of the minimum setback is permitted as opposed to shall be required. And then, I think, other than that, I'm really delighted to say that I think we've crafted as good a one as we can come up with, based on what HCD says. So, good on us.
Great, thank you, Phoebe.
Wait, I'm trying to raise my hand.
Sure.
Looking for my little hand somewhere. The other thing that I want to report back is, you know, my office and staff, you know, we're pretty ADUed out right now, I mean, we, and we've been really working hard, and we also got the attorney that wrote the letter, he confirmed that he was okay with these changes. He tried to push one more change on us, but it was, it was very minimal, and we didn't accept it, and he, he didn't push it, push back on that. So the other thing is, is I'm glad that we did take a little bit more time and hopefully avoid, you know, possible, you know, litigation or something. So I'm glad, it was a little bit more painful, we had to work through his comments, we had to work through his comments, have them reviewed by HCD, Guido had another, had calls with HCD, and so, but I, you know, so anyway, we did, we did respond, and that attorney was okay with our final version. And we did send it to him, and he knew that it was on this agenda, so, and we have not, you know, knock on wood, we haven't heard back from him. So I feel like we've satisfied the people that did have comments.
Okay, great. Duho, did you want to go next?
Sure, sure. I'm muting myself here. Well, I, yeah, I would, I want to echo my other commissioners in saying that this is, this document has come a long ways, and I think fantastic amount of great work has been done by the staff, and I think kudos to you guys for that. I think it's definitely gotten clearer, I think the charts have become much more user-friendly, which is, I think, the original intent. And I think, yeah, the information is fairly clear. I think regarding whether or not we move forward with the twelve hundred versus the thousand, I would, I would support the twelve hundred, rather than, I think, I think from a FAR slash density point of view, I don't think it's that significant of a difference, but I think from a quality of, of, you know, occupation and living within that space, I think a two hundred square foot could make a, make a big difference. So I would support that, twelve hundred square feet for the maximum size. I think this fight, I would say what Commissioner Bresik is expressing in terms of encouraging the property owners to sort of, you know, encouraging designers, architects, property owners, what have you, to sort of position the ADU away from the property line as much as possible. I believe, given the fact that one can place it right up, you know, four feet up against the property line, and that this will be, but I think the majority of the detached units will be up against the property line, in order to maximize the usability of the garden, or the yard, yard space for the principal house. So I think despite the, this sort of encouragement, I would say, as a homeowner, I'd probably lean towards positioning it as close to the property line as possible, in order to maximize the usability of the yard. So unfortunately, I think that's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult to really make that, make that an encouraging element, but we'll see, we'll see how that all pans out in the future. I don't really have any specific issues to address that hasn't, hasn't been already called out. So I think there's a couple elements that need to be clarified, I think, even, even on the chart, I think there's a few certain numbers that need to be adjusted, one thousand, two hundred does not equal a thousand square feet, so that kind of thing, but that's, that's all sort of wordsmithing. So I'll leave that, I won't comment too much on that. But that's really it.
Okay, thank you, Duho. David, did you have any comments?
Yeah, just more, to be honest, I agree, I think it is, all the improvements are good, and it is more clear. I also agree with twelve hundred square feet, for reasons that have been said, it just seems more, I don't want to say, I guess, quality of living is probably the best way to phrase it, but I agree with that. And, I think everything else has been said, so that's really all I wanted to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Rooney?
Yeah, hi. So I agree, I would say keep it at twelve hundred square feet, I don't see a compelling reason to reduce it, and Duho's argument about quality of life difference, as opposed to design-controlled benefit, negligible, compelling. I think if, you know, Phoebe's suggestions that somehow move these ADUs from, or being as close as possible, if the language tweaks can accomplish that, you know, not saying, sort of saying minimum setback allowed, I mean, I, I, I agree with those suggestions, the ten feet, and ten and ten feet suggestion. I'm comfortable with the inspection, because I like the idea of us getting that credit, I think we need it. And I also like the idea of ensuring compliance as affordable units, it's a big benefit, and we want to get both the credit and see people enjoy it. And those are the only things that I thought sort of were, of course, made a way in. I didn't disagree with any of the other small tweaks.
Okay, thank you. I'll just quickly say that I think that the hybrid model, so I think that at first, when we kind of went through it, it seemed like a very specific problem to what that resident had, but I think the more I thought about it, I think that having some type of language that looks at how to encourage residents to maybe use up the existing square footage and then get that credit back, I think it would help kind of create maybe a less dense situation, because we would be having some language in there, but I agree with what Phoebe said about not really calling it anything specific, just having kind of a line item that kind of discusses it. As far as how much credit they get, I don't, I don't really know the specifics of how that would work, but I, but I do think that it's a valid point. I think going from eight hundred to eight fifty is really good, I would say twelve hundred square foot maximum, I would agree with that. And then, yeah, the voluntary additional setback, I think just a comment that says, once you get to that ten foot, then no daylight plane is necessary, just so that, that kind of reinforces why we're, why we're doing that. And then the survey, I don't know enough to know how that would, how that process would work, but I think that if there is a way for us to find out, to get credit, then I think that that would be smart. But the council might have a suggestion on that. And I think that was it. But other than that, I really love the updates, and I think it's really well-prepared to go to council now.
You know, Nolan has mentioned, though it was in the staff report, how everybody feels individually about asking council to waive fees. That was one of the requests that Guido put in the report for us. I support that.
Waive or reduce? I thought he was reduce.
There was something about reduce that Jolie's gonna jump in on, about, there's that, even if you waive them, you can't reduce them, because then you're giving a bargain to private...
No, 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 you can't waive them, but you can reduce them.
Okay, so I sit corrected, I support reducing them.
Yes.
I would, I would support reducing as well. Yes, likewise.
Yeah, me too.
I think that's unanimous. Okay, so I think that, I think that's it, unless, Guido, if you have any comments for us, or if you kind of know the direction?
I do know the direction.
Any more public comments?
Phoebe was gonna say something. Phoebe was gonna say something, so.
No, it's Shala Ali, I just wanted to know if there was any more room for public comment, or we done with public comment?
Public comment is over.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Guido.
Yeah, I do understand the direction, I would say, because I've gone through two inside attorneys, one outside council, three HCD people, the whole four-foot thing, I'm a little concerned about touching that, that seemed to be a big concern of that one attorney who took interest in our ordinance, so that's the only one that I was gonna, kind of just say, yeah, that, that took quite a bit of back and forth, back and forth, so I, the state wanted to make it abundantly clear that people have a right to four feet, they actually complimented us on the voluntary part of the ordinance, in terms of how it specifically says voluntary, so I, and I've actually been using that with customers, even before the ordinance got adopted, just to say, hey, you know, if you could, it looks like you have a big backyard, if you could voluntarily, and here, here's the draft language that we're pushing, and generally, customers have been voluntarily doing that, so I, yeah, that was the only one that I wanted to kind of politely bring up, so.
Phoebe?
If you look at it, and can say minimum instead of required, I think that if someone's looking at it and says the minimum is this, that's different than saying you must do this, which is what required means. And if you don't change the language, but explain at city council that that's what the intent is, I would be happy, but I'm really concerned that just plain English, someone reading it says, I'm required to have a four-foot minimum, or I'm required to have a four-foot setback. No, you are, the city is required to allow you to have a four-foot setback, so you can say the minimum setback is four feet, and that is clear, but if you're not comfortable because you're gonna get pushback, as long as you explain the intent to staff and to city council, I don't think it's gonna be a problem.
And, and...
We can, we can look at that burn and talk about it, but I get what you mean, you don't mind people saying, I'm required to do four feet when you could do more, so I understand. We can, Guido, we can talk about that.
That's fine, that's fine.
I think rereading that, rereading that paragraph, I completely agree, I think that's, that's, I think that's not sending a right, I don't think that's what the intention is here, yeah. I would agree.
I would completely agree also, that has to be changed. And keep in mind, I know you've gone through a lot of people and a lot of things and whatever, it's also our job to tell you, you know, what we see here too. So they might have missed that, or maybe they actually were glad, because that was actually more, giving their, you know, potential ADUs more than were required to give them. So I would also support that that should be changed to be the accurate statement.
Okay, anyone have any last comments for Guido? Okay, so I guess we can take a vote on our motion on approving this.
I move that we recommend adoption of the proposed ordinance to city council with the twelve hundred square foot large-size ADU, with some clarification for the minimum allowed four-foot setback, or a comment to the effect that if you use existing principal residence square footage and new, you get some credit back for the space that you use in the main house. in the main house, and that the voluntary encouragement for additional setback be at ten feet and ten feet, both side and rear.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
And we recommend that the fees for permits be reduced.
I have, I have on the PowerPoint some other verbiage in terms of the.
Oh, and that we, that the zoning text is exempt from CEQA, that an amended master fee schedule, I did say that, will be looked at, and, and all these recommendations. It's part of my motion.
So Chair Ha, just 'cause I've been working on this for three months, I just wanna make sure, so, the four that are on the screen, and the twelve hundred square foot, take a closer look at the four foot setback verbiage, and the ten foot and ten foot setbacks for the voluntary, is that?
And credit if you use part of the existing house to create an ADU that's not a JADU.
And then I, and then I think in fourteen dot fourteen dot zero eight zero, the voluntary additional setback, I think just having a sentence that says, that the daylight plane would, would not apply if they do go to the ten foot and ten foot, just so that, that's kind of a, just a sentence in there.
I accept that voluntary amendment.
So the only, the only problem is that if it's attached to the house, we're gonna be enforcing the daylight plane for the house, so, so that's the only, that's why I was, that one, that was the only one that was a little bit also problematic. But I understand that this is more for the detach, I understand what the commission's saying.
Oh, yeah, that was, the daylight plane not applying would be for the detach.
Thank you.
I think if it's attached, it would have to follow whatever the existing house is.
Understood.
Yeah. I think that was it, but I, yeah.
I need a second.
Yeah. Would anyone like a second? Okay. So I guess we can do roll call.
Who was the first?
Okay, um, let me see, Chair Ahgi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hodgner?
Yes.
Commissioner Bresik?
Yes.
Commissioner Mead?
Yes.
Commissioner Merritt?
Yes.
And Commissioner Meadows?
I'm going to voice just a deep concern about the sentence that I really haven't heard addressed, there is no size limitation on an accessory dwelling unit that is created by converting space within the existing primary dwelling or accessory structure. With that concern expressed, I will say yes.
The motion passes six to zero.
Okay, great.
Who was the first and second on the motion?
Roni was the second.
And the first?
Commissioner Bresik was the first.
Bresik, okay.
Okay, so I guess we will move on to commissioners' reports and comments. Does anyone, or, maybe, maybe John can give us an update on if there's anything going on?
I'd be happy to. We're looking ahead to about the middle of July, we have several meetings on our list of upcoming meetings, both planning commission and city council meetings, and the studies that we'll be interested in. At the city council's next meeting on June the twenty third, they're gonna be taking up a variance modification to a use permit and zoning, or, excuse me, designer view, I meant, to the school, the state assigned school at eighteen sixty Grant Road, that was something the planning commission considered earlier this year, so that's gonna make it to the, the city council with consideration. On June the thirtieth, we will be having our first meeting regarding the city's objective design standards, the consultants that are working on this are gonna be doing a presentation to the city council on their findings to date, and the feedback that they've got, by having one-on-one interviews with a lot of stakeholders in town, and I think some of you were invited to, about all of you were invited to meet with the consultants on that. I don't have a time yet for the commission, but we will report or send out an email to everyone to let you know when that meeting will take place, it's gonna be an interesting meeting, and it'll be interesting to see and hear what the, the consultants have to say. Your next planning commission meeting is scheduled for July second, we don't have anything on that agenda for you, so we're going to cancel that meeting, so that should give you time to prepare for the Fourth of July holiday. July fourteenth is the first city council meeting in July, and at that meeting, they're going to be taking up the reach codes, that's something that some of you have expressed an interest in, again, those are the all-electric utility requirements for new construction or newly constructed buildings, and with the recommendations tonight, they should be able to take up the accessory dwelling unit regulations. Fourth of July the sixteenth, which would be your second meeting in July, we have nothing on the calendar as of yet, but we will let you know of items that we need to have you take a look at. That kind of wraps up information that we have. Couple other things I wanted to touch on, I believe all of you received the letter from former planning commissioner Alex Sumek, that indicated he needs to, has resigned from the planning commission, and the mayor accepted that, and then I wanted to follow up with the commissioners, at your last meeting, you had a number of questions and concerns regarding the email, and the ability to get email from the city, I checked with our IT department and sent out some information, was that useful or helpful, or do we still need to explore other ways to make sure you're notified about emails that we sent out from the city staff?
That actually didn't help my problem at all, 'cause that assumes that it hasn't kicked you out and invalidated your password, so if I had a password that worked, I could get in, and this is, this is what the problem is, somehow it keeps invalidating, so I would need, maybe if an IT person can contact me, that would be helpful, I don't know about anybody else.
I have the same problem, and actually, Roni and I were talking about this, this happened when both of us were out of the country last year, and at that point, Microsoft declared us terrorists and basically shut us out of the account, and it has never worked since then, I have to retrieve it from Outlook, and I do that on a regular basis, even though Outlook is not my preferred mode of communication, but I, it doesn't show up in our regular mail, and my password is invalid, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what I did, but I, I had that problem, and it was a problem for months, and then, I think maybe, when I got a new laptop, I, somehow when I set it up, it, it worked again, but, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what I did, but mine is working now.
I can't access it even via Outlook web, so, and it seemed to happen like on the first of a month, so I wonder if there's some password regeneration process that happens that they don't inform us of, and we're just booted out, 'cause sometimes, you're right, Roni, sometimes it lets me back in for a month or two, and then it kicks me back out again.
Okay, well, I will have IT get in contact with you, and we'll start working on getting the resolution to that. Okay, that's it, that's it right now.
Okay, so if there's nothing else, then it is eight twenty-four, meeting is adjourned.
Yay!
Thank you, Commissioner, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, it was a lot of hard work for the ADU, but I do appreciate the input, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Guido, and Jolie, that was a lot of work.
Great job, well done, thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Thanks, everyone.
And we have to thank our, my associate, Eric, did a lot of work on.
Eric, you haven't seen yet.